Good afternoon, everyone. And welcome to the September 4th meeting of the Houston Housing Board. Now we do have a few commissioners who are in room, but we do have a forum, so we're going to proceed accordingly. Anna, would you be kind enough to call the board?
Yes, sir.
President Chairman Crowler?
Here.
Vice President Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Seth Lewis? Commissioner Ballard?
Here.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Commissioner Perkinville? Commissioner Lee? Secretary Bryant?
Here.
So we have two commissioners who are in room. Thank you. And now we will move to the introduction of our interpreters. Please.
Would you be the first interpreter? Lady, please. I'm David, but now?
My name is Lady, I'm the interpreter. I'm Lady, the French interpreter.
Thank you. Anna, please let the record reflect Commissioner. We will now move to the public hearing for the development of Independent Heights 2. And I don't think there's any roll call for that, but if anyone is now open for public comments, Donna, do we have anyone signed up for public comments on Independent Heights 2?
No, sir.
Okay. There are no comments, the public hearing will close and allow it to be officially closed. Now we move to public comments. Donna, do we have anyone signed up today for public comments?
We do. We have three people signed up. Speakers will be allowed three minutes for public comments. Speakers will only be allowed to speak once. I will inform you when we have one minute and again when three minutes expires. The board will generally not respond to comments or answer any questions. HHA residents making comments are encouraged to state their name, property where they reside clearly, and someone from the property management company will contact you regarding their issue. And we have Ms. Allen. We have two Ms. Allen, so you're the thirsty one, but you're first.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Allen in I-3, we saw PMD, 3rd Ward area, and I'm, my concern is in reference to the Kenny Home Project. And my home is in the 3200 block, one of six houses that was designated to be acquired under an abandoned claim. I received the notice in October of '23. You all have assigned the guest group to represent the housing authority on that matter. We were sure that everything was going to be done by December of '17 and that we would be given to January, end of January of '24 to move out. During that same time, I was diagnosed with cancer because I was doing automobile accident and I had four emergency surgeries during that time. I made a decision to go ahead and physically move my body from the house and acquire another property. So it's almost two years now and nothing has been done. I'm maintaining two homes and I have high property taxes at the top of the house because the mortgage out fell, this whole set. I would like to know, when I decided to go back and move back into my home and have my house finished, look, am I going to do anything? Now I'm told that the project is back on. I need to know that what's the status of this plan? Do y'all plan on doing anything? Because I don't want to keep putting money into my home and neither do I want to keep maintaining the expenses of two homes while you all are not talking to me personally. No decision is being made, no action being taken. The people are, we are not, the citizens are not being told anything. We're getting the runaround. Without housing, houses won't give us any information. You call the guest group, they're no longer pro property. They're no longer the middle person between housing and us. I'd like to know what's going on, what's going on, what can I expect as a citizen? What can I expect? If y'all all want to profit, profit, you need to do so in a timely manner. Thank you.
Make sure your address, please.
Okay. Which one is it?
The address of your home?
3235 Alamo River Street, Eastern Texas 77004. Dash 4600.
Joel Moore, can someone make sure we can get Ms. Allen's information and we can circle back. Robin, Robin, right behind you, Ms. Allen, she'll be here. There we are. We will follow up. Thank you for your comments.
Uh, right back.
Yes. First of all, let me say good afternoon and welcome to the historic Independent Heights community. We're thrilled to see each one of you that you're here today and just really excited. So I'm coming on behalf of the Independent Heights Redevelopment Council. We're, as you all know, our service chair, and also on behalf of the Independent Heights Baptist pastors and beneficents. And we want to say thank you all, Chairman Crowler, to this esteemed board, just for the unanimity that has been shown in relations to Independent Heights, to development. We are so grateful for your leadership in terms of where we started from seven, eight months ago and how you all have maintained the force and the commitment to this community. So I didn't want it to go without being said, how much we appreciate you all sticking to this, seeing this project come to fruition and to continue to doing the great work that you're doing for this second phase of development. And then I also would like to say, as relates to this particular development that we're here today, I think it's been around eight, nine years since this particular first phase of the project has been, was completed. And many people have frowned upon and thinking about saying, well, we had another horrible development, you know, crime would increase and that sort of thing. But to God give you glory, there have been no significant incidents of this property. Obviously, it's crime all over Houston, so there comes with some minor issues. But I think you all are to be submitted to how this property has been managed and has been maintained for all these years. So we just look forward to a continued great relationship with the new project. And again, thank each of you all for your commitment to Independent Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Um, Ms. Allen?
Hi, I'm Lady Allen. I live here on premises in a state building in A. Oh, my concern is the security. I've been living here almost four years now. We have residents that come in and residents live in the hallways. They cook in the hallway, they sleep in the trash rooms, and it's always call the police, call the police. When we ask for security, time after time, they constantly direct into our video, into our cars, all the time. And it's like, we don't know what to do. And we do police reports, we do all of those, and it's still nothing has been done. It's a safety issue. They're currently in the garage taking payoffs with the water outside, and they take payoffs, strip down of their clothes, and it's always call the police, call the police. Most of Look-It-Tee High School have the gate codes. All the residents have the gate codes, so they come in and they come in our building and smoke, and then go to school. This is in the morning and in the evening. Yeah, they're always in front of my door, just trying to get a camera. They're always in front of my door smoking. I had a couple of incidents where the kids dropped a pipe because they wanted to smoke it and, and like I said, it's always call the police. There's nothing ever done. So I'm speaking on certain occasions in the building, A, and like I said, time after time after time, and a lot of my neighbors could not come, but I did want to make sure we speak about that because it's not, it's not safe. It's not safe at all. At all. And we don't know who's breaking into the car, but it all took me one time. But the safety is in the garage. We ask for laws to be done, we ask for all kinds of safety, and everything else is worried about it until policy. So like I said, I'm speaking on behalf of my building, a lot of people are not here, but I think it's not fair that everything else is done here except for the safety. So I just wanted to make that concern. Um, like I said, we do, y'all know here, we're here, we're in, and like I said, I constantly call and ask for, hey, can the baby change the cold? What can be done? Because the kids are ridiculous, and they come in at even, now they come in 15 to 20, coming out of the building and smoking. You know? So it's, it's, it's ongoing, and like I said, it's gone on four years and nothing has changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, for your comments. We will, we'll circle back on that shortly.
Pastor Jenkins?
Good to see everyone here. I'm recovered already again, just by hearing the residents speak, but I am Pastor Jacob Jenkins, I'm pastor of the Protestant Church, I've got the churches on East 43rd Street, this two streets. And I have a part in our neighborhood as well as preaching. One servant is here as well. I want to speak on behalf of a member of the Protestant Church. I came here in 2012, and when this particular project, when I had a member who was renting in the community government, and this project that member got excited about being able to move out of a renting situation into something that they felt would be more permanent and new for them, but they didn't know exactly when to apply. And they pre-spoke to their landlord that they were moving out. And then once they went up and they tried to apply, they weren't able to, and that caused them to have to move from this location to the north of here off of 59, into a situation that has been badly structured. And so I'm thankful, grateful to see new opportunities found in place, but I just hope that those who are in this community will be aware of how to apply early and not late. And so as the pastor, I just came to say that I also want to say that I also agree and stand with Pastor Mackey, Pastor Mackey, today. And that's why I want you to know that we are a united community, and we are trying to work, work together for the benefit of the residents of Houston. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Braden. Is that Anna Braden? Yes.
My name is Joel Murray, 4305 Fox Street Street. I'm in two blocks down the street from this project. I'm here today to say, if you can't do this right, you can't do that right across the street. For eight years, the detention colony was too small, it was changed during the construction phase, it's never been properly maintained. It has discharged against all kinds of things into the city storm ring. Nobody's ever checked that, nobody's had an engineering report, anything like that. Respect that for a fact, I think I'll be very sure, but you also have a crime problem here. And as Ms. Allen said, my friends who live on the other side, you get periodically flooded because this area was hotter than their yards. We had 32 assaults in the last year and a half, armed rapes, and weapons, 30 weapons charges. So I did an HPD, um, an HPD report for the last year and a half. You have a problem, as Ms. Allen said, it sounds like it's only kids now, but it's going to be a problem. Weapons, weapons, lots of discharges, assaults, lots of armed rapes. What are you going to do? You don't pay taxes, this place doesn't pay taxes. That falls on the burden of people like me who do pay taxes. Now, I'm not going to have anybody here not go without protection, but we shouldn't have a problem that prohibit, if you have it, you're going to have to. Is that correct? Okay. If somebody else is saying, I'll be back.
Thank you. Be back.
Mr. Manaty?
I can be more, should we?
This is the last one. Thank you.
You probably don't mind me moving loud because I'm a little paranoid now, but I really don't give a damn because I seen this here. I've been here for six years and I seen this here take place, and after you leave, after the management leave and everything, all hell breaks loose. The A-11 is where I stay, A-111, apartment A-111. I have seen people call us, even my car, and just broken into a car, 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 car. The staircase is used for, for, on the fourth floor, peeing down, all the way down to the first floor. Not only that, sometimes they take it up. The school shooting from Look-It-Tee in the morning, they're dope smoking. You step out on the floor or you have to step or even step in it to enter your apartment, you taking that into your apartment. Kids out the school, hanging out the window, smoking dope. Family, the exit lights are all broken. On my floor, I had to beg the manager to please take the shades out of, out of the window. Because when I drive in, I look at my floor, there's the shades where they keep them out, they're bent to shade, all torn apart. There's people sleeping under, in the hallway. They so bold, they bring the hot plate and start cooking. Then they take the, they come and lay down in the hallway to charge up their phone. The A-11 should be abolished, it must should be torn down.
One minute.
Okay. How many minutes do I have? Because if you do this all day, that's not very nice. No one gives a damn about the A-11. The family people can't come out and sit down and enjoy outside because they, they take the table and stuff and use it, it's like casino when, when everybody's gone. All kind of dope transfer, all kind of people coming up. We can't, can't hardly find a market place because people coming in, parking, it is pathetic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you all. We will now move to the approval of the August 19th, 25 minutes. The board has had an opportunity to review those minutes, and I would now ask for a motion of proof that's submitted. So, do I have a second? Thank you. And please let the record reflect that Commissioner Lee and Commissioner Perkinville did arrive within the last 15 minutes. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. We will now move into Mr. Bryant's comments, operational updates.
Welcome, everybody, and thank you for taking the time to come out today and thank you for your comments from everybody who stood up and talked. I am taking notes here and I promise you that they will be addressed in a short order, but this is, I wanted to clarify with you, sir, you were talking about building A as well, is that correct? Okay, just want to make sure, I'm urging Ms. Allen to make sure she's here, she's speaking with the same, but holistically, holistically, some of my teams here will, will circle back on this ASAP. They do have, we have some things that can be done immediately. One of the things that was talked about is something we've been focusing more on, the housing authorities, our partnerships with law enforcement and with other security folks, and so we will have those discussions as well. Some of these are the first time I've heard some of these comments, and I agree with you, this is unacceptable. So we will, we will work on solutions and how we can, and if we need to put more resources out here, whether that's online, those that, line of cameras, whatever, if you have money promised, we will put those resources in place. Because, because the comment that is made is absolutely right. If it's not working now, what's it going to look like in two years when the property next door is open? And so we owe it to the residents here today to get this solved sooner than later. We also owe it to the residents who are coming and continuing to come into this community. While we can't solve that and everything, we can do better on the property as we do on the control. So if you have my promise, we will work on that. Independent Heights 2, thank you, thank you Pastor Mackey for your comments, and thank you for the team and for the community who has worked, worked very hard on this over the years to get it to this point. Actually, my first day at the job seven months ago, I spent in this community at one of the local churches here, meeting with residents and just hearing your stories, hearing about what this community is. And so, you know, while it is taking a little longer to get to this point, I will worry with the drums and stories of us above the federal government. I am excited that we are going to be voting on this today to move this project forward. And, you know, one of our representatives from the local team is, is here and told me that we are looking at actually putting shovels and ground next door in November. So, so that'll be exciting to finally see some momentum building in the community, in the site next door, across the street, the next offside, you'll see the works starting over there. But Pastor Jenkins as well, I heard your comments, and we will do better about communications, getting websites, getting announcements, getting things out to the community early, especially as we get closer to the ability to start pre-leasing, for example, units, and making sure the community knows how they can participate in that early. So I heard you, and we will make sure that that happens. But be looking forward, you know, I spent my first day in the community here with Pastor Mackey and with council member Castillo, but also with our colleague Congressman Turner, and we're all strong advocates for this project, the latest I've ever seen. And so we hear you, we're here, we're looking forward on this project, and so thank you everybody for your patience. But I agree wholeheartedly, we've got to, we've got to make some efforts in this community, not just on management, but it sounds like on building safety, to make sure not just this property, property next door in the neighborhood, I can't believe this is going through. And so we will, we will work with, we will work with all the parties we can to help make that happen. The other thing I want to make a statement about, and for those in the room, with those watching online as well, we are, the housing authority did open up our procurement portal last month, we're extending applications for 4% tax credit, 1% bond deals to come in and partner with the housing authority. For those who may not be aware what those are, these are tax credit projects, they get tax credit along with some of the state agency, and they have lottery, a loan lottery that happens at the end of October. And so we are opening up applications for ready developers or partners who are looking at developing a property using tax credits, the 4% program. If you're interested in working with the housing authority on those, please go to our website, your procurement portal, and you can apply that way. If you also have questions, you can reach out to our little estate and investment team or our partners and counselors at Joe's Rose and they can answer those questions. But our next board meeting is October 16th, so we will need all those applications in by the first of October, if we're going to get along the October board meeting. We have a couple of projects that are being considered right now, but I just want to make sure the public knows that. And then my last comment, if the board would give me the leeway, I just wanted to read something. So I think everybody in this room agrees with me that we're living in times that are, I hate to use the word unfortunate, scary, I mean, there's so many adjectives we could use, you know, but last week was, was not, unfortunately, was not only different than a lot of weeks we've had in this country for the last couple of years, where we have seen violence, whether that's in the form of school shootings or on buses or on college campuses or other cases, that it's just saddened us and saddened our society to see that, you know, unfortunately, people taken anger, being taken out in such a violent way. And so last week, we were honoring those from 9/11, I sent out a note to our team, and I wanted to reiterate a couple of things, and if you guys will allow me, but when I asked our team to do, I said, do five things for me today. I said, first and foremost, if you're faithful, I would ask you to pray for our nation, our leaders, pray for each other, pray for the families who have suffered from all of these tragic losses due to violence. Nobody's been immune, it doesn't matter what side of the aisle you are, what you look like, everybody's been affected by this. Also, I said, please thank our good folks such as Brian Terry, our constables, our security staff, our servicemen and women, everybody who puts themselves in harm's way to protect others. Be vigilant, observe it, especially when you see others struggling. Mental illness is a real issue in this country, and it's something that we, we tend, especially I know a lot of men tend to want to ignore and not address. And so if you see somebody struggling, don't be afraid to ask, don't be afraid to give people help and resources. The fourth thing I asked people to do is I said, please, if you exercise your own, your rights to own firearms, please do so responsibly and ensure those weapons are always properly secured and out of the reach of kids and others. And the last thing I asked them to do was just to please remember the grace that's been shown each of us in our lives, and please use grace as the first tool in your, in your toolbox to deploy when you're dealing with conflict and confrontation, right? Show grace, listen, empathy, right? It's, it's a sad world that we live in, when violence becomes the readily go-to place for folks when they're, when they're frustrated, when they're, when they're not feeling hurt. And so, not speaking any particular issue, but, you know, a week ago now, this, dozens of things have occurred over the previous months, and unfortunately, it affects all of this. And so I just wanted to share that and share that publicly. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll yield the floor back to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for the work. We will now move into new business, and we have Resolution Number 3918, which will be presented by Stedman.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I take it you've been appreciative, thank you for your time today. My name is Stedman Estes, I'm the senior project manager of the REE Department of Houston Housing Authority. I'm here today to present a law resolution 3918. The purpose of this resolution is to secure approval to award contracts to follow construction LLC, detailed to God's LLC, and Emerald West LLC as contractors to grant older adults home modification program. Brief overview, this program is a HUD-funded grant that was awarded to Houston Housing Authority to improve safety and accessibility in homes of older adults. It's focused on small modification and maintenance-like task items that support independent living for seniors. The aggregate program amount is $875,000 with a cap of $5,000 per senior per home. We had interviewed and brought in an in-house occupational therapist that will provide independent assessments of seniors in their homes. We additionally have interviewed and brought in three prepared contractors and laid clear expectations on limited program scope of course, to satisfy program requirements, but also to satisfy Houston Housing Authority's requirements and expectations. No work should be done, no work should be authorized if there are required to build permits for the long base of work, such as opening the walls to install improvements, maintenance items. Importantly, I recommend that the board consider Resolution 3918. Thank you.
Thank you, Stedman. Just for the record, this resolution was pulled last month to allow for further vetting to go forward, and I'm pleased that we've accomplished that, and I feel much more comfortable in proceeding, so thank you for your work on this.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, may I ask Stedman a question?
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, may I ask a question? Stedman, would you mind letting folks know, or if not, let them find out afterwards, if there are seniors who want to participate in the program? How do they find out about the program? How do they apply to it? What's the process for a senior to be able to take part in this program?
Yes, absolutely. So, right now on the Houston Housing Authority's website, there is a tab for older adults home modification program, going over the requirements and different assessments based on this grant. The senior does have to be 62 years of age, has to have a low to moderate income, like an additional 100, that is 80% handed by, and that possibly found on the tab for older adults home. In addition, we are in a semi-partnership with the City of Houston and Harris County Area Agency, where they're also referring seniors that are going to their programs to our programs, where they're traditionally...
But it is for single-family homes, so anyone that lives in an apartment is not eligible.
No search for senior, senior family homes.
Okay. So, housingforhouston.com, or the older home modification tab, and you'll find the information out there, change your home.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Alan.
I think, I think this is a great program. Unfortunately, I think today, the South West Houston is a lot of people don't know the program. Is there any way that I think now, chances be sent, and some of history might pose kind of a public, maybe, can they invite house technologies there to give public a kind of education for them to learn to work and how to apply and how to apply that future? I think that could be a way to give the chairman a, a...
Well, it's, it's $75,000 is the cap, and it's $5,000 per max per house, so, but yeah, great idea. Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Any word of discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I'm sorry, can I get a moment? I'm off.
I'm being emotional.
Thank you. A motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Stedman, good luck. And please keep us updated on your progress. Resolution 3918. Resolution Number 3921, which is for, being presented by Mr. Norwood.
Detective police told North City Vice President of the community of Reno and asset manager of Houston Housing Authority, Resolution Number 3921, authorizes the Housing Authority to refinance the Sweetwater apartment apartments. Sweetwater is a 260-unit apartment building located at 791 South San Houston Parkway. We refinance it at an existing loan of $2.5 million. This current loan has come due and matured, and so we're putting a new financing in place. The new financing dollar amount is up to $22 million. We've currently continued to work on the scope of work, and so, the proceeds of the loan will be used for lending required reserves, critical repairs, non-critical repairs, and closing costs. We're also, aparting the loan is we're going to pull out some loan proceeds so we can make those critical repairs to this apartment.
Thank you. Any questions? May I have a resolution to, a motion, please, to approve Resolution Number 3921? Yes, I'm ready. Thank you. For a second?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion, any questions? Okay. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, an executive session will now be held at 2:34 PM on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, to discuss personnel matters in accordance with Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, legal issues in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, and real estate matters in accordance with Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code. Believe that will be, that meeting will take place here, so we'll need to vacate this room, please. Thank you all.
If you, if you plan to stay with the back half of the meeting, you can go out into the lobby and we'll call back in when we get the sessions up. Thank you, everybody.
on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. Anna will be trying to have the call roll.
President and Chairman Crowler.
Here.
Vice President and Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner says Lewis, Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Carter.
Here.
Commissioner Perkadal. And Commissioner Lee. Secretary Bryan.
Here.
Thank you. We have two resolutions. Resolution number 3922, which is to, for consideration and/or take action to authorize the Houston Housing Authority's development of Independence Heights Two Apartments located in 222 Cross Timber Street, Houston, Texas, 77018, and the execution of all required documents therefore. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3922 as submitted.
Sub move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Now we flip to Resolution Number 3923, which is for consideration and/or take action to authorize the President and CEO or a representative of the Houston Housing Authority to approve that their street public facility corporations' issuance, sale, and delivery of its multifamily housing revenue bonds for the purposes of Independence Heights Two, Series 2025, and to a superseding multifamily housing government known for Independence Heights Two and the execution of all required documents therefore. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3923 as submitted.
Sub move.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I'll now move for motion of adjournment. Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 3:20 p.m. We do have some, uh, F D A approvals. I'm sorry. The next one is Victory Street Public Facility. Do you want to call roll? Anna?
President and Chairman Crowler.
Here.
Vice President and Vice President.
Here.
Director Osanos Lewis. Director Ballard.
Here.
Director Carter.
Here.
Director Perkadal.
Here.
Director Lee. Secretary Bryan.
Here.
Thank you. And I'll ask for a motion to approve the June 25th, 2024, Victory Street P M C four meetings as submitted.
Karen.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Under good business, we have Resolution Number 25-01, which is the authorization for Victory Street Public Facilities Corporation orders designated the issuance, sale, and delivery of, one, its multifamily housing revenue bonds for the purposes of Independence Heights Two, Series 2025, and, two, a superseding multifamily housing government known for the benefit of Independence Heights Two. Approving performance substance of and authorizing the execution of delivery of documents and instruments necessary to carry out the financing of such multifamily residential general development and containing other provisions related to this section. Have a motion for Resolution Number 25-01.
Sub move.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn at 3:25 p.m. Okay. Thank you. All in favor, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned at 3:25 p.m. Okay. We're going to finish it up with, I'm sorry, Victory Redevelopment Corporation. Call that meeting of their order. Anna, please call roll.
President and Chairman Crowler.
Here.
Vice President Director Bryan.
Here.
Director Smith.
Here.
Director Lee.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for, uh, I see here we have a motion of officers.
We get to elect an officer for this meeting as we appoint senior directors last week. Okay. All right. So Chairman Alau, go through our officer of elections and for our board of Victory Redevelopment Corporation, I'm going to call for nominations for the position of President and Chairman of the Victory Redevelopment Corporation. If I have, do I have any nominations?
I nominate Alton Smith.
I don't hear a second. So this is, if there's no nominations, we will call for a motion to reelect Jimmy Crowler to the position of President and Chairman of Victory Redevelopment Corporation. She's called a little hard. Alton and Joey are the only three present on the table. All in favor, report. Are there any nominations? If not, I'll call for the reelection of Joey Crowler to the position of President and Chairman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So Crowler, any opposition? No objections? Joey Crowler is reelected as President and Chairman of Victory Redevelopment Corporation. I'll now call for nominations for the position of Vice President of the Victory Redevelopment Corporation. Do I have any nominations? I'd like to nominate Alton Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Call for the vote to elect Alton Smith to the position of Vice, Vice President of Victory Redevelopment Corporation. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. Alton Smith is now elected as our Vice President. So for that's position, I'll call for nominations for the position of Secretary of Treasure of Victory Redevelopment Corporation. Are there any nominations?
My nominee is Brian.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I call for the election of Jamie Bryan to the position of Secretary of Treasure Director. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Set that to the final service, Secretary of Treasure. Chairman, that is the conclusion of our election of office.
Thank you. And I will pass for a motion to approve the August 19th, 2025 minutes as submitted. And a motion, please.
Go.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And for new business today, we will approve the Resolution Number B R C 2521, authorizing Victory Redevelopment Corporation's facilitation of the development of those shared apartments located in 222 Cross Timber Street, Houston, Texas, 77018, and known as Independence Heights Two Apartments, and the execution of all required documents therefore. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
With that, I will now entertain a motion for adjournment at 3:29 p.m.
Go.
All in favor say aye. We're adjourned. Now the last is 20 p.m.
20 p.m. is, uh, is, uh, they got.
Right.
What was it, five?
Uh, 3:20 p.m. We are finished?
We're done for the day, everybody. Thank you so much. And we will be getting a communication out to the neighborhood about our groundbreaking ceremony. Is that right, Robert?
Yes.
Yes, correct. And well done.
Yes.
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 So?